Thank you for coming out, we've got a large crowd tonight, that's a good thing. We'll start off tonight with our prayer request list as we normally do. We've got a long list here and we just, give me a second to go through everybody. First, we want to remember Samantha Della Hay, that's Deborah Della Hay's daughter. She has cancer. We need to remember Tracy Bratcher's daughter and family in their prayers. For Jennifer Honey, it's retired Smith County High School teacher, her mother passed away. For Melinda Spivey and Miranda Cook's fathers going back in the hospital. For Eric Swan and his family with their new baby. And also Ms. Pam Davis with a new grandbaby born, both unborn to date. We need to remember the Martin family, Ms. Kelly Martin and her father-in-law passing away. Mr. John Hi, his father's passed away. And Mr. Joe Taylor had an uncle pass away and he's gone to the funeral tonight. And also all those that's been affected by the hurricanes in Texas and Florida, we need to remember those. And are there any others that anybody knows of?
Jimmy Craighead.
Jimmy Craighead, that is correct.
Jimmy Craighead, Tammy Craigheads? And Tammy Huddleston, Jeff Skelton?
Tammy Huddleston and Jeff Skelton.
That's the three of them. Wanda Fisher was first.
Do you have any others? If not, we'll go to the Lord in prayer. To heaven and father, we've come to you thanking you for another day that you've blessed us with. Father, we never want to take that for granted, that we're given another day. And father, we just always want to remember that how blessed we truly are, especially in this community and this country. Father, we share many blessings that many others don't, and we just want to thank you for those. Father, we've had a lengthy prayer request list tonight, and we just want to pray for all those that are on it. And any others, father, that may be in our minds or in our hearts, father, we just want to pray that whether it be they're sick, or they're shut in, or, father, that they've lost loved ones, that you'll just give them strength, or whatever that they may need, father, in their lives. Father, we always want to be thankful for the school system and prayerful for it, father, for everybody associated with it, especially our children in this county. Father, we just want to pray that they'll always be kept safe, and they'll learn in this environment that we give them, father. And just want to pray, father, that you'll be with them through their many trials that we maybe didn't have as we were children, and times seem like get a little rougher every year. Father, we just want to pray that they'll be able to steer away from the bad and just cleave to the good. Father, most of all, this night, we want to thank you for Jesus, and it's His name we all for this prayer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start off tonight with our school updates. And we will start off first with Gornville High School. Mr. Principal Beiden will come forward.
Chris, you have it, or you need to?
However you want to do.
Both, where you want. All right. First thing I want to say is, so I know we've had a pretty good transition year, a lot of changes at Gornville. Things are running great on my end of it. I'm sure Coach Frye, Coach Clemens will have a little more to say about that, because it kind of affected those guys a little more than it did me. I walked across the parking lot to a great school. I mean, I don't know what else to say about that. It's, we've got great parents, great parental support, we have great students. So, that end of it has been an easy transition for me. Now, we'll say, I haven't yet gotten used to all the time. I have to spit. My days have gone from nine hours to thirteen hours with all the activities, but that's a good thing. Also, man, if it's Connie Smith who was making the transition last year, gave you a lot of good advice, and I appreciate that. A lot of good advice about going from elementary school to a high school setting, so I want to prepare for that. Few things that we've changed, our adding at Gornville High School this time that wasn't there, is we've made some honors classes. We started out with honors math, with a Core One math, which we plan on continuing that to Core Two and Core Three math for our students. We also have started an honors English one and two. We'll not go to three and four, because we think our student enrollment will be sufficient for those students. You know, it's something I'm still getting my hands around academically, from where I came from to where I'm at now. But bear with me, and I got good help, Ms. Gilvin and those people are good to help me. And that's about all the changes. As I said, when we got there, the school was in, you know, it was in great shape. Coach Frye and Christian Scudder and those guys, it was in great shape. So, there was not a lot of things that had to be changed. I did see some guys that I want to congratulate a little. We've got a golf team that's kind of made a little history, I guess you could say, in Gornville. They won some district matches, and I was fortunate enough to get to go score them this week in the region. Jacob Lappert, I think finished second in the district. He finished second in the district. Joseph Webb finished fourth in the district. And Casey Malone, I think she finished second in the district. So, that's something that we're proud of those guys for. That's a first, I think, for Gornville High School. So, I want to congratulate them as they're here for that. Also, just to give you a little update of what's coming up, we're in our homecoming week. We've got our junior high homecoming, actually, this week, will happen Thursday, and we have our high school homecoming week next week. So, if you get some calls about people might be breaking the dress code, they probably will be, okay? So, we're going to loosen up a few things next week and let our kids hopefully enjoy that. One last thing I would like to say, you know, we talk about numbers and we've made a split there, and just to, I see some of the things that, when I walk from the elementary school to the high school, more in our junior high than our high school is our numbers. Coach Clemens, I called him today to get some numbers. We have 487 kids in our high school setting now. The best I can tell, and I got those numbers from Mr. Scudder, it was about 455, 460 last year, kind of give you an idea of where we're growing. We have six, our two smallest classes are seniors at 76, which will be replaced by a sixth grade class that's coming to seventh grade next year, 82, I think is what Coach Clemens told me. But then the next year, we've got a class of 95 coming. So, I see some problems of things we've had to deal with in the last year or so. So, I just wanted to know, as again, I don't like to be a negative person, it's just the challenges we have to deal with and things we'll deal with when we get there. But I enjoy being there, I hope the kids have enjoyed it. It's been a good transition for me. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. If not, please.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Beiden. We'll now go to Gornville Elementary School.
First of all, to the board and to Mr. Smith, I'd really like to thank you for the opportunity to give me the job that I'm being in. These first two months at Gornville Elementary have been a wonderful experience for me. I've been at the high school for 20-plus years. Came over last year with Coach Lane, his assistant principal, and when he went across the street, Mr. Smith asked me if I'd be interested in being the president of Gornville Elementary. Of course, this was when all the changes were going on, with the split and all the things that were taking place. So, I really didn't know if I was ready to do this or not, but it's been a great first two months, I have to say. We've got 331 students as of today in Gornville Elementary. Last year this time, we were right around 500. So, we're down about 160 or 70 kids. And of course, with the meetings we had last year, y'all understood the challenges that we had, trying to test kids and places through RTI. I mean, we had a lot going on. And I think if you come into our school, we welcome you to come at any point in time, we've got a fully functioning RTI lab going on now. Mr. Mann, it's wild, isn't it? She knows, we've got some places to work with kids and make some extra help. Our music and our art department have got a room to bring kids into, so they can work on art projects. They're working on stuff in the classroom as far as music goes, and in years past, we just didn't have that luxury because we were so full. The thing that I think our students are most excited about is we have a science lab. It's a kindergarten room turned into a science lab, but to them, it's a science lab. And we've borrowed stuff from the high school, and we've stole, and we've done everything we could. You know, the first two weeks of school, I go in and I'm working on the boxes and looking at the solar eclipse through them. And the kids, they're going one day a week in the science lab and they're getting some hands on stuff, and it's wonderful. Every Friday, I go to the science lab just to see what's happening in there. And our kids are enjoying that. So, it's allowed us to do some things at Gornville Elementary, and I was only there for one year prior to Coach. It looks like you've been there for 10 years, so he had seen the growth. And when I got here, I didn't know any difference from when I moved to school there, when we had our guns, that that's been many years ago. So, we are able to do some things now that we were not able to do prior to this year. You know, the biggest concern of mine was welcoming those new students into our building that were coming from another place. And we also brought in 17 teachers this year. So, there was, you know, we had to make sure that those teachers were, it felt like that was where they ought to be and even wanted to be. And those students felt like it was a place that they could learn and have a success. And in talking to a lot of them, I feel like it does happen. I feel like they're enjoying their time at Gornville Elementary, and I think we're getting things going good. The biggest concern, the problem for me is, we probably have 155 kids that were not in there last year. So, I'm still trying to number everybody's names. That's been extremely difficult, it has been. I'll just give you some times. Last year, we were two and a half hours for lunch. We spent from 10:30 to 1 o'clock finishing children. This year, we're able to start at 10:50, we're done at 12:15. So, we cut that from two hours and fifty minutes down to an hour and 25 minutes. So, that's a good amount to get in the classroom. And it's easier to schedule in that situation. You know, if anyone here came and picked their child at the Gornville Elementary, last couple of years, traffic's been a problem. We changed some things, and I wasn't the most popular person as a result of that start with it. We'd always release car riders at 2:30, the small ones, the early car riders we call them, and it just kind of bottled everything up. This year, we were holding all seniors, plus his leave, and today, I checked my watch at eight minutes after 3:00, there was not a car waiting in line to get out of there. So, it's going well, I mean, the parents are starting to figure out, well, this way these buses got here, I pull in, and now I can go out both ways. You go out to elementary, or you go through the high school, that's that way too. So, it's going good. I foresee nothing but great things from Gornville Elementary. I think we're going to continue. You know, we have some early test scores back from last year, we have some good scores. I think we're going to have some really good scores this year. Like Coach Lane said, I've spent some time with Dr. Connie Smith, and she helped me out a whole lot, and people like that, that I'm always going to try to pick their brains, and figure out what we can do to improve our school. But that's just what I am, I'm a football coach, so we're going to be the best whatever it is we do. So, you're more welcome to come to Gornville Elementary anytime you want to, we'd love to have you. We'll take you around, show you the school, show you what's going on. I think our kids are excited, but there's some more opportunities taking place that we didn't have a chance to do in some other places last year, so proud. Does people have any questions?
No questions?
I guess I can talk to you. Anything that's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Clemens.
Thank you.
Now, we will go to New Milton Elementary School. Principal Frye. It's hard for me not to call y'all coach, I'm trying to be, trying to say principal and mister.
I still refer to Mr. Arson as Coach Arson, he coached me back in junior high, so that's all right. I don't have a problem with that at all. First of all, let me say, guys, I apologize, I'm going to leave here as soon as I get done talking, because I've got new niece, Pam Davis, and some grandbabies, so me and my family are going to go up there, so whenever we're done here, y'all pardon me, I'm going to leave. Kind of like Coach Clemens talked about, I spent 19 years in a high school setting. Assistant principal at Gornville High School for about the last 10 years. To say that going to this elementary school is a big change, that'd be an understatement. I didn't know how big of a change that it was going to be for me. Y'all always said, whenever I was at the high school and I had a bad day, I always said, I'd walk across that parking lot over Gornville Elementary. Got hugs over there. I didn't get a whole lot of hugs going from high school. Other things, but not a whole lot of hugs. But I get a whole lot of hugs in New Milton, and I embrace that. People said, you're going to get snotted on your britches and everything else, and I said, you know what, that's going to be all right. I love those greetings hanging on my leg. Now, many years ago, before I got into education, I was doing some substitute teaching, and I got called in to do either kindergarten or first grade. And after the end of the day, I went to probably Mr. Arson, I said, Mr. Arson, I really appreciate you giving me an opportunity to come in here and work. I said, don't call me back, this should get. They're needy, they require a lot of attention. At the time, I didn't have kids of my own. Now, I've got, both of my children are there at the school as well. I've gained a whole lot of patience, and that's helped me out in where I'm at now. So, right now, we're running about 241 energetic students. There's a whole lot of hopping and bouncing and touching and jumping and running, and I'm all the time. Slow down, stop running, keep your hands to yourself, calm down. They're energetic, they're young, and they've got a lot more energy than I've got. But we've got about 241 students, 13 teachers, we're roughly, we're right at 20 per class, or pre-k is full with 20 students, and we're right at 20 per class. I did not realize, today really, we had Salisbury steak for lunch today. You got to go and cut up a whole bunch of steak. And I say they require a lot of attention, they require a lot of attention. I've never opened up as many milk, pot, milk and water and ketchup or anything else, so it's a, it's a job, and you guys know that, if you've got it ever, and you have most of all that by 2:40, it's worth, it's worth. But it's good, it's good, we're having a big time. New Milton School, Gornville Elementary, Gornville High School, we're trying to collaborate with each other and work together, not just for this year, but years down the road, to try to hopefully make that whole aspect better for everybody, hopefully improve on test scores, academics, athletics, whatever it might be. And one of the steps we've done that, and to try to stay together, we've combined the GESPTO and New Milton School Pals, they decided to combine together, so that school's four organizations is going to be one, and we're going to be working together collaboratively, the two schools, together in order to do that. I'm not supposed to do this, but I do also, I know there's other two guys, but Dr. Connie Smith, she so graciously donated, gave a nice contribution for our media center and helped us tremendously with that, helped us get that going, purchased some software and things like that, and we're indebted to you, and we really appreciate that. Guys, as far as I can tell, things are going well. I don't know, I didn't know what to expect. The first two or three days, whenever we started doing car riders, buses and all that, and I'm not lying to you when I said this, my heart would start racing, because I was so nervous about that. Because what I'm used to, bell rings and they go. Now, I'm learning by getting these kids on the right bus, and the right vehicle, and with the right person. And it made me so nervous. But I tell you what, things have gone so great, and it's not anything I've done, it's because that group of faculty and staff that we have there have jumped right in without being asked, and helped out tremendously. We've got several people out there walking kids to vehicles. Now, it's not great, it backs up a little bit, we don't have a whole lot of room to house vehicles. But man, they have jumped in without ever mumbling any kind of, any kind of, you know, earwax or anything like that, they jumped right in. And again, a lot of us without me asking. Now, with that being said, our EAs, we use them a lot of times, we have to cover them for meetings and this, that and the other, and are always willing to not brag on those guys, because what they do and what they get paid, they're, they are so, so valuable. And it's because everybody pulling together and working together to make that work and make that school work and make it to be, that's the only reason it is what it is. And I taught, I met with, had a meeting at the first of the year. And I told those people there that I understand feelings people may have, but I hope at the end of the year, that they will come to say, hey, you know, this was the best thing that could have happened. It's a chance, because we've got something great going right there, and I truly believe that. And I think, hopefully, we can do that justice. Anyone have any questions for the guys?
No questions? Thank you, Mr. Frye. And as a board, we've heard Dr. Smith's name mentioned quite a few times, thank you. Thank you for what you've done, I'm not even going to try to name things, but thank you. We will move on now to our facility audit, Mr. Ryan Ball. Will come forward.
Got some handouts for you. Can't look ahead, lose points on the test.
You better hold mine, here, guys.
Is that right?
I'll have to pee.
Hey, it's thick, but it's just printed on really good paper, so don't, we'll try to get through this pretty quickly, I know you guys have a packed agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, you don't get one, then you have to take it.
Okay, I was going to have you and drive.
You can drive.
I told him I was going.
All right. Who else want one?
I'm the tad of town.
Well, I got to start off before we get going, I keep hearing one name brought up all the time, whether I'm in Smith County, or working with Nashville Schools, or Overton County, or Chattanooga, or Lead County, or Knox County, I mean, all over the state. And Dr. Connie Smith is a great person, I'm glad to know her, and I appreciate what she does for me. We have some common goals, and we're trying to, we're trying to fix the schools, we're trying to help the schools, we're trying to create some programs that not only improve the schools and the environment, but also help further the education around learning, around STEM education, and making fun for the students, so I appreciate it, Dr. Connie. And, you know, it's probably been a year that I met with the county mayor talking about this, around facilities. And here I finally am. And I want, this is going to sound mad, this is the part where I get to soak up some more, but, you know, Mr. Smith has kind of kept me, I don't know the Smiths, I feel like in my last name, I Smith, I don't get it. But I got to say that what I do and what people do in this industry, and what, you know, Barry has done as far as sheltering the school district from folks, says a lot about his leadership and his character, because if you want to say I've been vetted, make sure that I'm going to say the right things and do the right thing. He's put me through it, so I appreciate it, I've got a headache, I've got a little more gray, but I think it's all for the best, and it's going to, when we show you kind of what we're covering, it's all been approved, it's been very methodical as far as what we're talking about, because at the end of the day, it's, we're here to look at your school buildings and talk about how we can improve them. So, let's kind of get through this. Anyway, thank you, Barry. Introductions, I'll start first, and I'll let the other guys I have with me kind of just introduce themselves. My name's Ryan Ball, I'm with Johnson Controls, and I help work on schools.
Now, I'm Joe Vaughn, I'm also with Johnson Controls.
Casey Murray, and I'm the engineering manager for Johnson Controls.
And to be clear, that guy is one of those ones you stand close to, because he's super smart, one of those big-time engineers, and so I'm glad that we were able to grab him and say, all these states he's working on, and all the schools in all these states that he's here in Smith County. So, I'm totally excited, and as far as some of the numbers that we're going to talk about, we're really excited to have you here. So, brief agenda, we're going to talk about Johnson Controls a little bit, explain the audit. We're going to talk a little bit about what, you know, kind of what we do and what form this contract really is, for some financial thoughts, next steps, and some questions. And I apologize for those in the back, because the font on some of this stuff is going to be hard to read, so I'll try to talk through it a little bit and make it relevant, but we'll kind of, we'll kind of go over this a little bit. And again, this isn't really, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the slide, I know there's some more important items, but just as a company, Johnson Controls is a worldwide company. We do a lot, but in particular, I just want to talk a little bit about our presence in Tennessee. The red and yellow stars represent our locations, we have 10 offices in Tennessee, and then of course, we own Tyco Simplex, a security company, so of course, it's kind of like attached to our, to our Johnson Controls locations. We have just over 600 employees, whether that's professional engineers, project managers, energy managers, all kinds of support staff, staff, leadership. And to be clear, kind of what we do with regard to energy and sustainability, now, we make a lot of things too, but I don't think it's fair to list manufacturing, because what we're talking about is relevant to, in particular, just working on these buildings. It's not about making a widget, right? We do a lot of that, but I didn't want to muddy the water a little bit, and I want to make sure I presented a clear kind of explanation on what we are, what we are in Tennessee, and how we can help support the schools. So, now, let's get into a little bit about the audit discussion, and again, I apologize for the small, small numbers, but on a slide when I was putting it together, it really looked a lot larger. This is just kind of a representation of what your school district is spending right now with regards to utilities, so gas, water, and electricity. Right now, you're spending X amount of dollars, and now, just to kind of show you, you're spending about $735,000 a year on gas, water, and electricity. It's broken down by schools, you're starting to the top left. Now, this doesn't mean which school is wasting energy or wasting utility dollars, it's just they're a higher consumer, and they're paying more for it. So, in no, in no shape or form does this mean that Gornville High School is bad, right? They're just a bigger school, the high school, there's more students, they're just using a lot of power. And then it kind of, kind of tails off down a little bit. We've broken it down into some different colors, blue electricity, red is gas, and green is just water consumption. Now, we toured a few of your schools, and we've kind of looked at what we think, maybe some thoughts around areas of improvement. And the man that was here with me, Casey, he's going to go ahead and explain a little bit about what he saw, and we put some pictures, we've got some thoughts on there, so Casey, why don't you go ahead and share your thoughts?
Yeah, I want to start off and say, and first commend the board, because I'm going to tell you, y'all have, the school district and the staff here have done a tremendous job in operating the assets and the facilities that you have very well. We started, and Ryan just went through a lot of your cost and your utility cost, and I'll tell you, it's very low compared to a lot of other schools that I see. And I look at schools, North Carolina to New Mexico. So, y'all, y'all are doing very well, okay? But I want to add on top of that, you've got a lot of assets in the school that are getting older and kind of to the end of their useful life, and at some point, you're going to have to start thinking about replacing or upgrading those to the newer technology. So, but I do want to tell you, y'all are doing a real good job with, with the assets you have, so. I'll go through this pretty quick. We didn't go through every school, we went through a couple of elementary schools, I know we went through Smith County High School, and I want to thank Mr. Nixon for actually taking us around and showing us a few things. So, he was very helpful in explaining a lot of what goes on day to day in the school. But just to hear some of the standard stuff, here we got to hear the elementary schools, some potential things that we may look at to improve the schools if we get into more detail, is around the lighting systems, some of the HVAC systems, some of the actual water consuming devices, you could save a little money there. Probably nothing major there. Also, possibly some engine management or electronic controls to control the assets that you have. So, pretty standard. I did remember some of the pictures here, I think we went I do remember some of the pictures here, I think we went through, that is from Hartridge Elementary School. And I do know some of that, that equipment, the boiler, the cooling tower. There are some potential improvements to that, that facility. It was probably one of your, we could see, I think it was third on the list of largest consumer. It's definitely not your third largest facility. So, some improvements could be made there. Not to say the staff isn't doing a good job of what they have, it's just some improvements could be made. Go on to the next one, you'll see the middle in the high school, a few things there, lighting systems again. I, I know in the, there's a picture there of some of the gym lighting, that's just some technology improvements that could be made to, to improve the actual lighting in the gyms as well as energy efficiency. So, and so I think that's pretty much it. Ryan, do you have any?
No, I would, I mean, just to add to that, right, I mean, what we're really talking about is the way you're spending money on utilities, right? What we're trying to do is think about how can, with newer technologies available, what can we do to better spend that money in a smarter way and still gain efficiency, still have comfort, lighting and all that? So, I mean, it's, it's, it's very exciting with newer technologies and what's available to schools, buildings and how we can integrate that all together and ultimately save a bunch of, a bunch of dollars for the district. Now, Joe's gonna talk about, one more time.
So, so I think it's important, well, no, I always try to put myself in your shoes when we're, when we're here. And it really is, you know, what are these guys talking about, right? What, what's really going on and what's happening? We, at Johnson Controls and other, other companies do things that are called, the actual procurement method is a performance contract. And what a performance contract truly is, is that currently you guys are spending about $735,000 annually on your utilities. You've done a nice job working with Synergistic, the energy manager here, his name's escaping me right now.
Mr. Nixon.
Mr. Nixon, yeah. Who has done a, done an incredible job. When I walked into the restroom a few minutes ago, the light was out. I've been doing this 10 years and I promise you folks tell me that they do that, they don't do it. I've never seen it. And impressive, I mean, really, I'm not just telling you that because I'm here. It's, you guys have done an excellent job, but the great thing about it is that you've been able to set aside some assets from that. In addition to that, what performance contracting will do for you is you guys are, you're already spending that $735, right, on utilities. We have some things that we can do with our firm that will help reduce that by as much as 20% on top of what all the good work that you're already doing through Synergistics. Those savings that are created simply get carved out of the budget, right? So, you, you have a utility line item now and you have a debt service line item now. You're, the savings that come out of the utility line item, let's just say in this case, it's $200,000, it's not gonna be quite that much, but just for easy math, right? $200,000 just comes out of your utility line item, shrinking that to $535,000 and we shift that over to debt service, completely budget neutral, right? We guarantee the savings to happen or we write a check. We've written a check here in Tennessee in Carter County schools, you can call and ask them if did Johnson Controls honor their commitment, absolutely 100%. I've got customers in Wilson County, Lebanon Special School District, Crockett County Schools, Grundy County, you name it, all the way around this area. We've done a lot of work with school districts and when we, when we fall short, we do write the check for the difference. And the good part about it is, is it's the information that we're gonna provide you with or the, the assets that we're gonna provide you are assets that your school district needs, right? They're not just gonna be GWIS items, it's gonna be replacing, looking at boilers, looking at chillers, if you have chillers, HVAC units here, whatever else might be, as Casey was talking about a minute ago, around the assets you have, we're looking to upgrade those and put more efficient systems in that are gonna be completely paid for out of your savings. Any questions on that? I just told you what I've known in 10 years and 10 minutes. So, here's another slide that kinda shares with you what that looks like. I'll point to it because I don't have a little pointer, but if you look at the operational costs here and that includes your utility line item, this is what you're spending today. When we, when we go, if we were to do a contract with you, we would upgrade your facilities, upgrade your assets and you would have these energy savings. That blue part gets paid back in annual capital repayment. Once again, no new money being spent, as you can see by the bars, that it is an even cost effective, budget neutral approach. And then, after the fact, you enjoy all the savings. We don't keep any savings, we don't make any money on financing here, we don't do anything of that nature. Our job is to be your general contractor, implement the measures, guarantee the benefits and the savings and be your partner over the term of the contract. Next slide on there. So, we took a stab at kinda what we saw, right? So, we looked at what you have here and to Casey's point earlier, you were, you're a little bit different than a lot of districts that we see because going back to turning the light out in the restroom, we don't see that. You've done an excellent job. So, sometimes I give this, this presentation and that number looks like 30 and 35% of energy savings that we can see. Sometimes it's greater than that when we see some folks that are in really, really bad shape. But when you look at a 20% savings on that first table there, and I'll kinda go through this a little bit slow, but, but your first year utility cost savings would be, if we base it on today's numbers, at $147,000. That's a substantial amount of money for your budget, but the nicer part about that is that it could, it could eventually turn into up to $2.4 million of work being done for your district that's completely budget neutral and paid for over the, over the term of the contract. Excuse me, maybe that's 15 years? You know, and we have a 17-year program here too, we're showing. Or what I'm gonna talk about in a minute is even a, a really unique program that's safe we have here in Tennessee that we've done a lot of work with, with Paul Cross and Energy Efficient School Initiative, is a 1% loan program, which is, I mean, that's about cheap as much as you can find, right? For 12 years or less, so 12-year payback and what that might look like. That number, so, so in that case, you know, the $147,000 and we're gonna have some operational savings in there too because y'all are changing some, you're changing light bulbs out currently, you're changing out belts and things are gonna be under warranty, right? You're gonna have service calls and that, and once again, these numbers are estimates, they're not, we're gonna dig deeper into this to find out if they're factual numbers and, and then we'll put a, we will, we will put a guarantee that that will happen or we will write a check for that difference. So, you can see when you, when you total those numbers up, you're looking at somewhere in the range between, you know, $2 million and $3 million of work that we're gonna be able to fund for the school district. And those items, once again, are gonna be lighting, new lighting, some building automation potentially, some water conservation means new toilets, new china, new, new fixtures in the, in the bathrooms and then your heavy mechanical stuff as much as we can fund. That's our goal. Our goal is to go in and replace as much HVAC equipment that's at the end of its useful life. If it's, if it's doing well and it's not broken, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? Type thing. We don't, we don't do those things. But it's, it's, it's all about a plan of putting this together in a bundled approach that all the energy savings pay for it. And we've also got some other unique opportunities that the TBA brings in rebate dollars. TBA, you know, in a district this size, they change the program so often, so I don't wanna quote you a number, but I'll throw one out just to give you an idea. You're probably looking at somewhere in the $20,000 to $40,000 of capital they're gonna just give you back for doing a program like this. So, there's some money that gets pumped into TBA. And then, we talked a little bit about, Mr. Smith and I talked about Synergistic and their program ending this year and, you know, what, what are you guys gonna do with those savings? What's the plan for them? Are they gonna go directly back into the, to the rainy day account? Where, where do they land and is it, maybe it's a good idea to potentially put some of those dollars back into our buildings because those are energy savings that we could, that we've already created, that Synergistics helped you create and now we can take that money and put it back into our buildings and create even more energy savings and improve our assets. I went through it again pretty fast, so I, I mean, I know, we talk about this all day long, every day and I try not to go too fast, but sometimes I get too excited and I do. So, if you, there's gotta be some questions around those, those numbers or that information as I, as I kinda spoke, as I spoke to it.
One question that I have is how, how soon do you start replacing and are you replacing at the same rate as we're saving? Does that make sense?
So, great, that's a great question. So, what we'll do, we will, through the process, our, our team will come out, Casey and some of those engineers will come and, if you guys said, you know what, I think I wanna do this, like this is what I think I wanna look into. We're actually gonna have a little bit of engineering cost upfront and we'll talk about how that works in a minute, but we would go out and engineer and design a complete project, just like if you hired an architect. In this case, you're gonna hire an engineering firm. And the engineering firm's gonna come in and design a complete project. We're gonna do a turnkey, no change orders. Hear me again, no change orders ever on a project of ours, no cost overruns. If we tell you it's gonna be $2 million and it costs me $2.2 million, we're not coming back to talk to you about it. It is, we, no change orders, no cost overruns. And that's not, not just Johnson Controls, it's any company in the performance contracting business that will do that because we gotta guarantee the results to it. So, we can't, we can't miss, miss that. And the engineering piece takes about 60 days max. Casey, let me put you on the spot, the 60 days max, right? And we'll design a complete project for you. At that point in time, you'll say, bring back a menu item for you of things that we saw that we could do and working with Mr. Smith and his staff and others and whoever else would be involved in that, you'll then begin to pick off and say, you know what, we need that boiler done, we need that, this, this is my priority list and you'll do those through, the energy savings will pay for this portion of it. And then, going back to even the Synergistic money, you may say, you know, I wanna put X number of dollars into this to go fund that other boiler and go fund this other piece of equipment. But we're gonna, long way to answer your question, we're gonna do all of it at once. We do it, all, all the upgrades will be taken at point of contract and we would, we would install that, the lighting and the, the water conservation stuff will be done on nights and weekends. Our contractors have been doing that way for as long as I've been here and well before I got here and they leave the class, if they leave it, if it doesn't look better when they walk in the door, we need to know about it, right? So, they come in at night, clean, and they clean it up for themselves, new lights are put in. We do that over nights and weekends and then your larger mechanical stuff get done on winter break, fall break, winter break, spring break, summer break, fall breaks. We don't, we'll never interrupt the class or the environment, learning environment unless you guys instruct us to do so because you have an event or something coming up and then we'll do, we're at your service. Does that, that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
And then, once, once again, our, when we come back with that, all the numbers will be in there too. We're estimating $147,000 energy savings, it might be 130, it might be 160, you know, but we're, we're feel very confident we're in that range.
And I think you, Joe, I wanna emphasize one thing. Joe may have a point and I, I wanna emphasize it one more time that, you know, this is y'all's, if you move forward with the project, this is y'all's project. He talked about, you know, we will come back with all these measures, but we're not, you know, it's y'all's to pick and choose where your priorities are and what to do. It's your, you know, it's your school district. You build the project, we're just here to support you and provide you the engineering and the numbers and how to do it.
You know, Joe, let me, Joe, one thing that stood out to me, you guys, this state program that is, it's very good. I mean, I can't stress that enough that we've met with these folks and they've verbally told us, we've got X amount of millions of dollars that we want to get rid of and, and fund school projects. And so, with what we're talking about, I mean, this is, this is very exciting and, and looking at additional capital that we can put back into the buildings, yeah, we'll fix lights, we'll fix all those things. Well, maybe you have a, a critical needs list and maybe you have one of those Santa Claus lists, right? And you're like, I really want this stuff, whether maybe it's security, maybe it's putting some key fob, maybe it's this and that. That's where this additional money that's dropping off can again, be bundled in and we, and we do all that for you. So, it's, it's very exciting because most school districts we talk to are not in this situation. Most maybe are right here, but the majority of them are around this, at 15%, at maybe 2%, 3% interest at a 15-year project, that's, that gets expensive. So, if we're getting the, the best amount of money that you can get from the state, state funded, state supported, looking at the additional capital that's coming off, how we can apply that and bundle it, now we're talking about, let's create a school district that feels good, looks good, operates well and, and we're, we're long-term thinking, right? Now, we can focus on academics, now we can focus on those other things that, that's important to a school, right? And that's what's exciting about this project. I mean, I, you know, Joe and I live in Lebanon, just down the road, so, you know, we, and we both have kids and my background was higher education and we start talking about what can we do to a school? It's not real exciting talking about light bulbs, right? I mean, we do this every day, but for educators, it's not real exciting. What is exciting is one less distraction. You know, think about that classroom of kids that are too cold, too hot, lightiness, too poor, you know, all these types of things that take away from that learning environment. Let's fix all that and forget about it. But the other piece is the term of this project, we're married for 12 years or 15 years, we're, we're a part of your team, we're an extension of your team. So, Casey and his engineers, we're gonna be coming out here, we're gonna be doing a lot of things, measuring, verifying, all this stuff for you. We work for you. So, think about that. I mean, it's great we can partner with David and his folks with the facilities, but now you've got an engineering team to add to that, to supplement his actions and his, and the opportunities that we have. So, guys are in a good spot. I mean, again, we're really excited to be here and talk about it and, because usually this type of opportunity doesn't exist. Again, doing really well with what you have to work with, but things are getting, get older, things are gonna break. You're gonna go and ask for money to fix that or let's try to leverage some, some money you're already spending to fix it now and be done with it? So, sorry I jumped in there, but it's a good point.
Any other questions on that part?
Has anybody got, if, if anybody's got some questions, do y'all care to wait till the, till the end when we do our discussion?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And we've got a lot of students in here, we're gonna try to get them where they can, they can get out and get to the house.
Get them ready for school tomorrow.
If you don't care, if you don't care.
We can wait.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all, folks.
Absolutely, thank you.
Let's move on to our awards and recognitions. We'll go to A, our donation to our Smith County High School Special Education Department from the Autism Benefit Motorcycle Ride, Mrs. Ned Hord, come up.
I am Ned Hord, I'm one of the assistant principals at Smith County High School. Mr. Haynes is our principal. He's been out at the conference the last couple of days. We asked him, or maybe he's out, he doesn't have to speak, but I will be proud to do this. Mr. Chris Parks, that's, you're happy.
First name is Tim Ledbetter, ride for Autism, Asahi Motorcycle Club of Liberty. Here to present Randy Hayes, Smith County High School's spent teacher for the shaping proceeds of the 2017 ride. The club had arrived beginning at Lexington High School and ending at Smith County High School, August 7th, August 19th, 2017. There were also Mustangs and Jeeps riding along and had a small car show the same day. Miss Randy Hayes acted as a point of contact and organized a luncheon for the riders and people that attended. The funds provided by the ride will be used to purchase playground equipment that is sensory appropriate. The equipment will be placed at Grand Paris, making it available to all children in Smith County. And if any of you don't know where Smith, Grand Paris is, it's right up here in the head. Playground built seven years ago, so this is something for every child in Smith County. Any extra funds will be used for the training through our professionals in the area of autism. Thank you.
Sure. This, this program was started two years ago. Our brother and friend, Tim Ledbetter, was part of our motorcycle club and he, he had a real place in his heart for kids with autism. So, within a few months, we were planning this ride and the month before the ride started, he passed away. So, we decided to make it the Tim Ledbetter Autism Ride. Last year, we, we're based out of Oakland County, our motorcycle club is, last year we started with our home county and give them the proceeds for the autistic program there. And this year, we decided we was gonna go to another different county. We have, we have members in Plutum, Overton, Clay, Dickett, and several surrounding counties. Well, each year, we're gonna do, choose a different county to do this ride for in Tim's honor. But I've got a check for $1,200 is what we raised throughout the ride and from everybody's admission and food sales and all that good stuff. So, I'm gonna present this, I guess, to Miss Randy and I hope, I hope it goes to, obviously it's going to the playground equipment, which is awesome and we'll definitely be down to the picture for that so we can show, put it on there in our records. Thank y'all for letting us come down and do this for the kids.
Thank y'all for doing it. Thank you. We will move on to B, our 2017 retired teachers, Ms. Melinda Spivey.
One of my favorite things to do is recognize teachers and students for their hard work and we have some of the best here in Smith County. For you, we're gonna do retired teachers first and before we recognize those teachers, I just have a couple of quotes for you all. The first one is the recipe for iced coffee. Become a teacher, bring hot coffee with you to school, start doing a million things, forget you brought coffee, then drink it cold. The second one, an awesome teacher is hard to find, difficult to part with and impossible, impossible to forget. We will never forget you. Many of you have, or all of you. Many of you have, or all of you have left footprints on someone's heart in the school district over the years. The third one, if you want to ever know what a teacher's mind feels like, imagine a web server with two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine tabs open all the time. And then the last one, and I think this describes our teachers best. And I know that even with me, many of you, it started all the way back as a sunny school teacher when I was still a girl. Educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all, first of all. So we're gonna miss you, thank you for your service to Smith County, and we wish you the best. The first retired teacher that we are going to recognize is Ms. Carol Webster. She retired on February first, 2017. Ms. Webster retired with just under forty years' experience in education. She has served as a teacher and principal in Smith County schools. Ms. Terry Watts, is she here? Ms. Terry retired at the end of 2016-17. She began her teaching career in Sumner County. She started in Smith County in 2008/9 as a countywide speech pathologist, and she is retiring with forty years of service. Mr. Steve Armstead, is he here? Mr. Armstead retired at the end of 2016 school year with forty years' experience, all in Smith County schools. Mr. Armstead serves, has served as an administrator, high school teacher, athletic director, coach, and bus driver. Ms. Vicki Russell, Ms. Vicki won't come on up? Ms. Vicki retired at the end of the 2016-17 school year with twenty-six years of teaching experience, all in Smith County schools. She has been a faithful kindergarten teacher at the Fiddled Elementary for the majority of her career. Mr. Ronnie Scudder, come on in here, Mr. Scudder. Mr. Scudder retired at the end of the 2016-17 school year with thirty-nine years of experience, all in Smith County schools. He has served as a teacher, coach, principal, and principal at several of our schools. Thank you, Mr. Scudder. Mr. Philip Brooks, I'm sure he's here. He retired at the end of the 2016-17 school year with forty-five years' experience, all in Smith County schools. Mr. Brooks has been an elementary teacher, a high school teacher, alternative school teacher, and a homebound teacher. And Ms. Debbie Rich, Debbie come on up? Debbie started teaching sunny school, has a little piece here.
That's right. That's still in it, that's not completely retired.
She retired at the end of 2016-17. Ms. Rich had thirty-five years of teaching experience. She taught elementary in high school and has also served as a library. Ms. Rich has worked in several different schools throughout her career. Thank you, Ms. Rich.
I've got one more left. I've tried to work in all of them. I'm doing it three days a week, building the new library at New Middleton, and it's a blessing and it's just wonderful and I just love the opportunity. And I want to also thank Dr. Smith for helping getting our media center on the go, and it's just gonna be great, we're gonna have a ribbon hanging one of these days when we get it off.
The next group we want to recognize is our CTSO students. And these students are in our Career and Technical Education Program. CTSO stands for Career and Technical Student Organization. For those of you who went to school when I did or before me, it was called vocational education. And you went to vocational class, now it's CTE class, and I am super excited about the future of our CTE program. We are really moving in the right direction and doing some great things. Students, I am extremely proud of you because for you and your advisors, this is like working on a team. The advisors are like coaches, and if you really do this and do it well, you work with your teammates to prepare for nationals, just like those teams who are playing volleyball or, or whatever their play is tonight. So, I really appreciate the time that you put into, my heart's in CTE, that's where I started, so I'm always all for the CTE programs and what we're doing. The first student that we would like to recognize, and if the student's advisor, principal, or parent is here, if you would please stand when we recognize these students, because this is also a question of you, the time that you help us to put in to prepare these kids for competition. These are all students who have participated at the national level. The first student we're going to recognize is Gordonsville High School FFA. The advisor is Mr. Ron Rogers, and the student is Mr. Jack Rock. Jack was awarded bronze in the National Agriculture Fair this past month. He won a state competition back in March of 2007. We're very proud of you. The next group of students is Smith County High School, FCCLA. Their advisor is Taylor P., and she is also the volleyball coach, so she has other activities. The first student that we want to recognize is Ms. Grace Harbord. Grace is a Tennessee State Officer and will represent FCCLA across the entire state of Tennessee. She is the Tennessee FCCLA State Officer for Starting. The next student is Morgan Oyster. She received a silver medal in recycle, recycle and redesign in the senior category. She was here.
Yeah, she was here.
Oh, okay. In this competition, they use recycled materials to make a purposeful item. The next team that we want to recognize is the Focus on Children Junior category. This is Talon Clarkren and Brooke Caliburton. They planned a project to educate younger children about family and consumer sciences-related topics. And I want to say this, I went to the bus school to, Ms. P. asked me to come and listen to their presentations and critique them. And before I could get back to my office, I had a thank you note from Talon thanking me for my time and my feedback. And so I said something to Ms. P. about it, and she said, I'm not telling them to do that, get that off his own. So, those gestures are certainly noticed when, when kids do those, those things. The next student we've already recognized, but we need to recognize her again, is Grace Harbord. She participated in the interpersonal communications senior category. She earned a gold medal in fifth place in the nation. This competition consisted of choosing an activity to strengthen communication in your groups. The next category is the Senior Entrepreneurship, and this is Ms. Karen Jenkins. She earned a gold medal. Her project was making a family and consumer sciences-related business. The next and final FCCLA at Smith County High School is Shelby Niles. And Shelby did the recycle and redesign in the junior category. She earned a gold medal and she was ninth in the nation. The next group we want to recognize is the Gordonsville High School FCCLA, and their advisor is Ms. Jenkins. And I'm impressed with all the males in this group. There's all males, and I love that.
It's a hit.
The first student, well, we have two that are not here, they're females, they've already graduated their, their college, but I do want to recognize Odery Graham, Chapter in Review Portfolio. She earned a gold rating with an overall score of ninety-six point six and placed seventh in the nation. Tessa Reader also graduated in May, and she volunteered during, before and during the conference. The next group we want to recognize is the Senior National Programs in Action. This is Caleb Ward and Joseph West. They earned a gold rating, an overall score of ninety-nine, and placed second in the nation.
Their project was like texting and driving. If you notice the signs when you're leaving the mama park, they're part of their project that remind you not to text and drive as part of their project.
Awesome. The next group is National Programs in Action Junior. These students are Jacob Lambert, Mason Ward, and Ian Young. This is pretty impressive. But, well, they all are, just really. They earned a gold rating with an overall score of ninety-nine, they placed third in the nation, and obtained a perfect score from two of the three judges.
The next is on the human trafficking. Her project's out, and it's, it was a learning experience.
And nationals this year's in Atlanta?
Yes.
And then the next year's Anaheim. So start saving your money. The next group that we want to recognize is the Smith County Middle School HOSE. And this is the only, let me just say a little bit about this group. This is the only middle school CTSO that we have right now in the county. There are very few middle school HOSE chapters in state Tennessee. So we were very pleased when they even just began a chapter. And I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Jenkins for helping them get that started and, and the, the Smith County High School students for going over and helping them to try to get it started. And also to Ms. Audrey Russell, anytime you begin something and start it from, from scratch, it's a, there's a learning curve involved, and there probably really was, as it being a middle school. So we are really excited to introduce health sciences to students at the middle school level and, and try to get that started. And we hope that, and in fact, Ms. Russell told me before the meeting, that they had interest applications for this year, and they had fifty-three students who want to join. So, that's, that's really awesome. So, they, this team was the public health team. The public health competition is designed to encourage HOSE members to plan and teach their community about specific health issues. Their topic for this event was raising awareness for the Zika virus. Teams prepared a two-minute presentation for a panel of judges, and then if they advanced, they had to present a ten-minute presentation over the given topic. The students in, and let me say this too, this is impressive as well, these students were placed in the top ten in the nation in this category, so that is awesome. So, we want to recognize Evan Jones, and he has moved, I don't think he's here, Ashley Long, Cindy Shelton, and Katherine Harper. When you tell middle school kids they go to Disney World, they are gonna hate you. All right, the last group that we're going to recognize is the Smith County High School HOSE organization, and their advisor is Amy Jenkins. The first student that we want to recognize is the HOSE Bowl team, and this is Lauren Rock, Alexis Taylor, and Ethan Foltz. You want to come on up? The HOSE Bowl is an academic contest designed to test students in the areas including healthcare systems, health careers, laws, and medical terminology, A and P, nutrition, and safety The next group we want to recognize, and they're no stranger to this room, they presented their project to our board members early in the school year, and if you see the cubbies out in the community with food in them, this group began that project. And I, when I leave Fort Truitt every morning, I stop to make sure there's food in a cubby. So, the community awareness team is Maddie Legacy, Kate Dry, Logan Dyer, and daughter This community awareness team, the purpose of this event is to develop a project to promote community awareness of a health or safety issue to the local community. During the school year, the HOSE club works hard at building and installing community cubbies around our county. These cubbies were to be filled with non-perishable food items as well as essentials for members of the community in the health. The first cubby was installed at SEHS, with seven additional cubbies being installed around two of our school campuses. These cubbies have done a lot of use in our county. And let me say this too, those cubbies are there and they'll stay there, so if you see them, or if you know someone who needs some, if they're empty, they're open all the time, you can put things in them anytime that you choose. I know last year, in the cold months, people put gloves in there even. Doesn't necessarily have to be food. And if, if you know of a family in need, and they can go to one of these cubbies that has something, they're more than welcome to take what they need. So, congratulations to all of you who started on parent work and gave it done for our CTSO And that group is everybody?
We, uh, everybody knows the drill. They've been in here, they know, much of war, Joe, like.
Not exciting.
No, it's not exciting.
I built one of them. I built one at the high school. I built one at the high school.
I did, I did.
I didn't build one, I built it when I built the rest of my flat. Built what I grew what they wanted. A bunch of extra wood I, uh.
I think most of this will zip through pretty quick, so just catch me if there's something you have a question, just make sure I don't, make sure I don't, uh. All right. Y'all ready? We'll move on to consent items, do we have a motion on our consent items? Jaiman, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Everyone hopefully had a chance to look at superintendent actions, ask any questions you had of those. We will move on to new business A. This is a policy amendment five point one-one-seven, teacher tenure. This is the first of two readings. We have a motion on new business A.
I'll make a motion on new business A.
Scott Bond, we have a second? Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to new business B. This is a new policy six point two oh one-one, voluntary pre-K attendance. This is also the first of two readings. We have a motion on new business B. Mr. Jaiman, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C. It's a new policy and amendment procedures incarcerated youth. This is the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business C? Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to new business D. New business D is a proposal for school audits. We have a motion on new business D. Mr. Manning, do we have a second? Mr. Apple, any discussion? This involves money, so we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business F. This is the fiscal year eighteen, Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers grant approval.
Go back to D.
Skip E?
Yes.
Pause your eyes for that. New business E. This is, uh, FY18 safe schools grant approval. Do we have a motion on new business E?
So move.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion?
Just briefly, I wanted to share, I called, uh, Mr. Smith about this a couple, I guess, day or two ago yesterday, we talked about it. Um, it had been brought to my attention that defeated elementary, there's certain places in the building that they don't have cell service. And he just provided me with a map, um, that shows you the black area here shows where they have cell service. The orange shows where they don't. And, uh, this is something that that funding can be used for. And I would encourage you to check your buildings, check with your schools, make sure they have that. In an event of, uh, intruder, um, you know, that would be important for people in these orange areas to be able to have access. And he has other ideas about how to do that with radios and so forth, but for alternate communication, uh, means that's important. So I just wanted to encourage our, you know, all your board, all the board members, particularly at Fort Traver, Union Heights, make sure, um, cause those areas have, historically have poor cell service.
Is it a browsing?
Um, yeah.
We, uh, tell you a little bit of what we've done, so let's just educate you. We took the, uh, we've been very fortunate, had a grant for several years. We use about half of it, approximately, uh, Thunder's Cowboy program. So, which is good, you know, I'm most aware of that. But we've had a, a phase program where we put updated cameras and security systems now at every school that the sheriff's department and law enforcement, we like just a little bit of it finished, if they were, a few key people on those teams could have a set of eyes in every building. And they're good, you can access them from your cellphone, uh, laptop, so on, uh, remotely. And then we started another phase, like Union Heights doesn't have radios at all. And we got a terrible time getting, uh, we're working with EMS, they're, they're upgrading their radio for some of the sheriff's department. And they're, they're actually donating some of those radios. I, I told you briefly, we're trying to put, you know, with sheriff's permission, and he's, I think he's gonna grant, we're putting a, a radio, and every principal would have one that they, they would scan, but they could go to immediately if there was an emergency to 911 ambulance service, sheriff's, and that kind of thing. So we're trying to get those in this phase, that radio, and then the ones that don't have any, in Union Heights, we're trying to phase that in. I think we'd like the alternative school, and I think we've got all of them now, we bought basic systems. And they all can be centralized, you're in central office. And like I said, the key people in law enforcement, like Officer Stewart, for example, sheriff's department, different departments can also access those from where they need, need to be. So we've had some, we'd like to start looking at keyless entry pads, and that kind, we spend a lot of money on locks each year. And those will actually log in and stamp on the film, so we're trying to do some different things with that money. It's not a, a lot of money, but we, in a portion like that, the Utrust grant combined those. So that, just so you know what we're doing. And like I told you, we'd encourage what she said, I know Fort Traver's got a problem, Union Heights, and defeated. And we're trying to, I should, Union Heights' radios in there have kind of been priority for safety.
They're, they're just in such a dead area, which, and we all agree, yeah. And it's important, and it, you know, I had no idea, you know, other than I was made aware of people in the building. So, you know, I just wanna make sure you check, check, check with your folks.
I got a, I got a network extender, I got two or three of them.
Problem is, is the network extender at this point, even if, the network extender, he said about the network extender at Fort Traver School, at that side of the county, let's just put it that way. Anybody that even has them, they're almost to the point where they're useless. We have no service, a lot more than we have service, which is unfortunate.
What I was gonna say is, this is one I beefed up. When David Lovecraft and Jim Royal, which is about 1,000 people in the school, I could be in the school's parking lot and be on hers. So if it, it goes about 50 to 60 yards in a circle, I'll give it to you.
Well, that would be, we'll take it.
I know that Wilson, that Wilson company, they say that, that particular company.
It's just 3G, it's not 4.
The 3G areas is Fort Traver defeated, that's still all 3G.
You're willing to have it. I think it'll hold up to 12 phones at one time.
Any more discussion? If not, this involves money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business F. This is the fiscal year 18, 21st century community learning centers grant approval. Do we have a motion on new business F? Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business G. This is a 21st century extended learning payroll increase for site director. Do we have a motion on new business G? Ms. Moore, do we have a second? Ms. Gatton-Bynum, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business H. This is a 21st century extended learning payroll increase for paraprofessionals. Do we have a motion on new business H?
So move.
Mr. Apple, Mr. Yeaman? Any discussion?
This involves going back to the, the, the.
He's made it public. All right, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business I. This is the annual review of DTC media contract. Do we have a motion on new business I? Mr. Manning, do we have a second? Ms. Moore? Any discussion?
Yes, I should've done this back in July before we started football. I will remember to do that next year.
Yes.
Sorry.
We'll let it roll this time. If there's no discussion, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business J. This is a bid approval for Miller augmented arc augmented reality welding system for CTE. Do we have a motion on new business J?
I'll make a motion on new business J.
Ms. Gatton-Bynum, do we have a second? Mr. Yeaman, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Move on to new business K. It's a bid approval for a plasma cutting system for the CTE program. Do we have a motion on new business K? Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gatton-Bynum? Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business L. It's a bid approval for Alex Patient Communication Simulator System for the CTE program. Do we have a motion on new business L? Mr. Yeaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore? Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business M. It's a bid approval for Chromebooks for the CTE program. Do we have a motion on new business M?
So move.
Mr. Apple? Ms. Gatton-Bynum? Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business N. This is permission to sell surplus equipment. Do we have a motion on new business N?
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Manning? Mr. Yeaman with a second? Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business O. It's a bid approval for Chromebooks for Title I. Do we have a motion on new business O? Ms. Moore, do we have a second? Mr. Apple, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. We will move on to new business P.
It's, it's on the way, it's, we've got some stuff, we just actually in the process of ordering as we speak. It's, uh, it's limited.
Just got approved last Friday. Too late to get on, on the agenda.
He's got on agenda, we, we hope we will have it the next board meeting, because they're planning to have everything written and handled on.
All technology, you know.
Well, I'm interested, which, which one?
High school.
High school, all going online.
Online testing.
But hopefully.
All right, we'll move on to new business P. It's an approval for emergency purchase of gasoline and diesel fuel. Do we have a motion on new business P?
So move.
Mr. Apple? Second. Mr. Manning? Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. All right, we will move on to discussion A. This is the educator survey.
Yes, I just wanted to share this with you. Um, and we had a district participation rate of 73%, which is very good. I believe your schools are down there and you can see their participation rate. Any school that exceeded a 45% rate, you can go online and look at your school results and all of theirs did. So that, we discussed this at, at the principals meeting, and that was, uh, we're very proud to have the participation rate that we did. I did give you a copy of our county, of, of our district survey. Uh, but if you want to see the individual schools, you can go online there at the website that I put for you to look at the results. Do I have any questions?
No questions? Move on to our discussion B. This was our school board retreat on November 14th. We have to have everyone present for it to count for our, for our credit for the year. And also, Ms. Grissom sent, I think I sent out a reminder for the survey that everyone needs to fill out. It's gonna give us credit for doing a self-evaluation or a board evaluation through T S P A.
And y'all are gonna talk about the results?
During the.
During the meeting.
During the meeting.
And I put the agenda in your packet, so you could see what the day would consist of.
Okay, and then that is the same day, we'll get, we'll get to that reminder at the end, but... So everybody needs to plan to attend that.
And, uh, we really haven't talked about it, but I assume we will provide breakfast and lunch that day?
Okay.
And snacks, okay. Breakfast, lunch, and snacks.
It'd be here. We'll be able to, that way we don't have to go to Nashville, that saves everybody the year having to go to Nashville. Are there any, any more questions about that? Let's go back to Johnson Controls. Were there, were there any questions for them that we may have?
I had a couple. One, like the application process. Joe, the application process for this, this 1% money, if we, if the board decided it is?
Yes, sir.
Do we do that, would you do that? Your company, I mean, who, that's pretty big deal, I mean, you know, who?
And then what else can I say, we're broke, so about, um, 12 million dollars in that kitty right now.
I feel like if we're gonna do it, I feel like, I guess Brown, you figure four or five days off trying to get on the front end, begged you, if we done it, to make us a model school, you know, you guys would be, help us, man, we'd sell it to you if we would, we'd bring them in.
We definitely can, uh, we handle a lot of paperwork. Because now you obviously have to have some signatures in there, the application, we handle all the paperwork. Uh, we work through all the details of it, and there's no challenges.
And then the, the second question I'd have, you were talking about, we basically have you for engineers for years. But what if we wanted, what if we could put, if we had the capability of paying this off in four or five years, would we still have the contract with you for 12 years that you're still our engineers?
So if we have a guaranteed place for 12 years?
See what I'm saying, if, if we, if we had the means to pay it off early, would we still have your services for those extra?
Absolutely.
You know, how about the difference in, you know, their yearly service fee?
Right. Right, so, so as far as the guarantee goes annually, you'll have a measurement verification consulting fee in there each year. And it's paid for out of the savings, all paid for, uh, through that process. So if you pay off your note in three, four years in the 12-year cycle?
Right.
The, the next eight years, you would just get a, if you wanted to keep us on retainer for that, you would get an invoice for that, uh, for those engineering services. They were already being paid for out of the energy savings in a, in a normal contract. Hard to explain verbally, so, so it'd be confusing, it's, it's, there's a, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Joe, you can show, I pulled it back to this slide, that shows that fee. Like you'll see under the 20% table, a, and this is, can be negotiated, I mean, it's just an estimate, 11,000. That's kind of the engineering fee, the man is the guarantee.
Is that whatever you, I mean, is that on that, would that be pretty much yearly approximately the cost for the manager?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's normally, it's, and we'll show that in the contract, and when we show you a cash flow, we'll put that in. We can, we'll have, if you notice, and if you go to the next slide, there's, you'll see in here, there's some workshops. And we'll come in and we'll explain what all that engineering will include, and what we'll do on a yearly basis for you.
So, so I guess my question is the manager, it's, it's, all right, if we're paying that 11,000 dollars and you're guaranteeing us X number of dollars, you still write us a check?
Yes.
Even though we had the note paid off?
Even though we had the, we're done with.
Yeah, okay.
That is pretty.
You're covered. And since that slide is, uh, you know, just, just kind of a quick next steps on what, how we do business. Now, the nice thing about it is it's pretty efficient, it moves pretty quick, if you want to move quick, it moves at your pace, right? But you can expedite things in a pretty, pretty timely manner, as you can see above. You know, typically, you know, when you think about like designing a big project, it takes some time to get everything together, you're building, you're building a school, which is a, it's a long ass task. Uh, but in this case, you know, we've got about 60 days, 90 days max of engineering time. And so what would happen tonight is if you, or when you guys are ready, I should say, is that you would prove what we call a project development agreement. And I mentioned it earlier, and I mentioned that there's a, for us to have, we have engineering time to come out and design a project, which you, which you would expect. Uh, and, and here, the estimation of engineering time is about 11,000 dollars, which is what it looks like. Now, what would happen is that, that you guys wanted us to go develop the project, and you tell me, you know, Mr. Smith says, you know what, you gotta hit these key parameters. I need X number of energy savings, I need you to address this type of deferred maintenance for me, these, these panels, the systems. And it's gotta be done in a 12-year period, right? Whatever, whatever period you pick out, he'll, he'll, he'll work with you guys to figure what that looks like. And at that point, if we don't hit those, you guys don't owe us anything, y'all don't owe anything to us at all. If we do hit those parameters, and you tell me that, you know, it all sounded good to begin with, I've kind of changed my mind. And we would just like to be reimbursed for our energy, you know, for our engineering fees. And, and I know, our estimate's 40,000, Casey had a problem earlier, we don't want you to think about that number. So, you know, you, you tell me, you know, we, we want you to, we want to be reimbursed part, partial or a portion of it, you know? And, and we think typically splitting that is fair. We, we say, you know, we'll just take 20,000 dollars if you decide that you don't want to do this. Does that make sense? It's not a, but we'll have about 40,000 at times, we're willing to reinvest, you know, just invest back in you and say that, we're willing to roll the dice, if you're ready to do this. And it'll only be 20,000 break fee if you choose not to move forward. But if you didn't move forward, all those, that 40,000 dollars will be rolled into the project, the cost of engineering. And we would design the product, or our design fee, and you'd go to contract with this, which would be done, looks like about, we're estimating sometime in that January, February timeframe. We prepared to go to contract and start implementing the energy conservation.
And nobody were telling these dates when we were putting this together, this is just a snapshot, I mean, again, your project, your design, your thoughts, it's, you know, we're working with you to, to think about what this looks like, timeline, I mean, you know, the, the state money. Timeline, I mean, you know, the, the state money was something that, you know, we, we want to take advantage of, that drives up. But, again, when we were at this superintendent conference, we made the point to grab the director and say, you know, we boxed him in and said, okay, how much money do you have, and can we have it? And it was a very positive response, so, um, so things are, are good, but...
And at that point, Ryan is sort of, but it just slides down. You say, you know what, I'm going to wait till next month. That, you have, now you know how long it takes, that's what it's there for, not to be, you know, pushy or anything, nature of the moment, kind of pushing.
Would, would this be paid out of general fund?
Well, what, what, what they're saying, that if you put it on the, on the note, they would guarantee you, once the savings were paid back, we save it on note, but my theory is that we could do it, we got, we got synergistics coming off, okay? Which is about what it would cost by itself, an accounting saving, and we got debt forgiveness coming off, so you're getting approximately four hundred thousand dollars a little bit coming off. So it shouldn't be an issue, that's really, I'd like to pay it back quicker, but I'd want to make sure that Ryan didn't bail on me after he got my check.
I think you, you, no, I, I think...
That's, that's what I'm saying, I think financially we're...
Yeah, I, I see exactly what you're doing. If you sign a performance contract with Johnson Controls, it is a standalone different contract than your finance agreement.
Okay.
As soon as I...
Absolutely.
So, you go.
So we're not, we're not, uh, spending money, but we're not spending money.
Right, we're using somebody else's in it, one percent, that, you know, I didn't understand, because I kept picking your brain, because I couldn't figure out where you get, I mean, you got to make money, I mean, that's life, but I couldn't figure out where it's coming. But I understand it, and it makes a lot of sense, especially if we can get in on, and I think for the board to ask this question, I know some of their wheels are turning, you know, can we build a new building? And I was told, no, we can't build, it's got to be facilities upgrade, it's got to, it's got to be water, electric, or gas, correct? It's kind of what it's got to be spent on utilities. If we could upgrade every school we had for the numbers we've been talking, we'd be kind of...
Is it just upgrade, or could it be water, gas, utilities in a new building?
So, in that, the, the way it's written and how prescribed it is, I mean, you can, there's some gray areas, I think, we could try to work, the payback, you know, has to fit within a certain twelve years, um, it's got to meet those criteria, so, um, you know, that's something that we would work...
Were you asking, I'm sure I'm saying, you guys like for new construction?
For new, for a new construction?
Right, so you, you, this would be, this would be more of a retrofit or something?
Okay.
Okay, then I have a, I have a question for Fort River, because we do have the natural gas that has gone through there now.
Right.
And, of course, we're not prepared for that, we don't have any of the, any of the, uh, heating, cooling, anything that's using natural gas. So the question would be, would that be able to be retrofit to connect?
It's old facilities, if you're, if you're, more efficiency, I think...
Right, I'm just, I'm just making sense, you know, I mean, I'm just asking the question only because when you're, when you're looking at Fort River, it's not that right now. So that would be a new unit, a new system having to go in for natural gas to come back.
I'll give you a quick example, if we have to listen, just take two minutes, you relax.
Well, just the deficiency on our freezers, for example, that's what we have on, and there are some of our key places, like our gyms, and I tried to explain that, you get no community around, usually it's their gyms, more like community centers than we do. And I think that's what we're going to really, could really save, but we're talking about replacing four hundred watt bulbs with, see? Twenty-five watt. That's, you know, and I think when you do that efficiency gauge, you'll be kind of shocked at how much your gymnasiums are used.
One of the great things you mentioned there about natural gas conversion, uh, Lakeville, which I, we're familiar with. Lakeville, um, they, they had natural gas, but Lakeville's close to county. But we, when we did a project there, they had natural gas, came through there, and we were working with Mickey Hall, Mitch Fox, and they said, I said, why are we not natural gas, everything's electric? And, and they said, we don't have it in the building. So, you know, we made a call, and natural gas company was pretty excited to run that to the building, you know, they didn't charge anything, because they're getting ready to pick up a large, and they put them off in all the natural oil, or, 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 natural gas water. Uh, that type of stuff, that's, that's what we're, and Casey and his team, they're thinking outside the box, trying to bring more energy savings, because the more energy savings that we create, the more work we're going to be able to provide for you, right? And that's good for us and for you.
Do you know, does a natural gas line run in front of defeated, do you know?
I don't know, I need to get a map, although I think it does.
Yes, I think it does, because I...
I know it runs through the air.
I'm pretty sure it does.
I believe it goes all the way to the Campbell split.
Well, it goes all the way to, at least on Charles and Rivers, through the air, so it only goes that far.
And if we do have access to it, that would be my next question to you, do you, do you feel like the natural gas savings is better than electricity, the new upgrade or not? I mean, that's something we definitely...
It's all situational.
Yeah.
Currently, the current rates in natural gas are...
It's, it's more, uh, energy efficient rather than...
It's more, it's more, it's more cost effective.
Yeah.
Okay? I'll say it's more energy efficient, it's, it's more cost effective. Electricity's a little more expensive for either of the areas.
And just to get in... Well, this is good, when Casey and his team breaks to the table, I mean, once we, if the board decides this is something you're curious about, you want us to kind of start developing it by school, broken down, you know, a menu of options that discussed earlier, like, here, here are what our thoughts are. Yeah, maybe you don't need this, but it's our job to kind of show you the technologies available to make your schools more efficient and operate, you know, better. So, th, th, this, what we kind of showed you was a very high level kind of concept presentation, um, but, but we're asking to come back later and then really break it down. Really show some engineering and what it looks like to me, and then if we need to, uh, all of that. And, and then break it down by school, very detailed, uh, very particular, so that you know exactly what, what's out there for every school, and then making some decisions, what, you know, what's a good fit.
Anthony, Sammy, you have a recommendation, what you would recommend on this?
Well, Mr. Shami, I think anytime you can upgrade, and, you know, if you'll loan me money, I'll borrow every penny you let me have for myself at one percent. Uh, you know, anytime we got a chance, and, and Ryan can tell you, this has been ongoing, I've twisted him and pulled him and tried to catch him and stuff, and I can't, so, uh, uh, Johnson is a very good reputable company, too. But if we can get money at one percent, and if we can upgrade everything we got, and not, I say change our style of living, or cost of living, or the way we live, and not have to borrow and get money, we can pay it back on the way we're doing anyway, basically the same dollars we had set aside. I don't see how we can go wrong. Uh, I'd like to know a lot more about it, obviously, and that's what I was asking Mr. Winkler, it's better about, if, if the board feels like that's something to pursue, we need to have a workshop, and then we could go out, give each one of you time to go out and say, like you said, have a Santa Claus list and what we need, and then we could look what we could actually budget. You know, I don't even want to take your savings in the, I don't know what we can pay back, you know what I mean? I don't like anything that I can't write my hands, anything else to balance, but, you know, if that's something that the board wants to do at that point...
Be fine, of course, we need to see the contract.
Yeah.
What do we need to do to get this started then? What, what does the board need to do tonight?
That's, just...
Set a work session.
Set a work session.
Very interesting, set a work session.
Do we want to do one before, after October meeting, or do we want to do one until December?
My only question of interest is this, I, I know there's just X amount of money, I want to make sure if we decided to do it, that we could be in the kitty, have a chance to do it, so, you know, I guess that would be a question for you guys, how a quick, I know...
We would, in order to get an application into them, we need, we need more data, so we have to provide to them, I can, I can send that to Paul Cross, and say, you know, Smith County School is interested in doing this, they'd like to be in the, in the queue, and he'll put you in the queue. But when someone comes with more data in front of you, and put that in front of you, so, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay.
I, I really don't, I don't want to push you guys into anything, so, I, I think that, that we can, we can wait until we do a work session, make sure you guys are all comfortable. We have a, the project development agreement, it's a, it's a real, I can shoot that over to you guys, it's a real simple document. You're not, um, you're not committing to anything other than that twenty thousand dollars if you choose not to move forward into a project. Um, there's no cost today, you can get going on it, it would just be that you, we start our engineering on that time. I mean, does that make, that on that side, it's, it's, I think it's like two things, it's, it's, you know, you guys may add some, it's two different things.
We want to say it.
No, no, yes, sir, absolutely. So we get that to you, um, and just you send over the, the terms and conditions to that tomorrow or tonight, you can say.
If we could get that for them to review, then I think, do you think if we reviewed this by November, October, November, we're still going to get shade as far as now, a chance to get the dollars?
So the, the only thing that I would, the dollars don't bother, don't bother me as much as the timeline and timeframe to get it done, and have it in summer months to end, right? I know it doesn't seem like summer, the club was still in summer. But if you look even now, we're, we've got a pretty aggressive schedule with implementation starting in March. That would be if we started today, so that's going to push to April. So maybe, so every month, we, and that, that's a pretty aggressive schedule, because we've still got some other materials in there, partying, lung closures, before we start spending money and all of those things. That, that's my only concern, is that we, because we want to be able to order equipment, we have lead time, you know, on some equipment, it could be thirty, it could be sixty days, um, that's the only, what I would call poke rush, but I mean, it's, you're never in a rush, right? It's, it's best with counting, it's, it's just...
Why, why don't, this is not it, why don't we set a work session two weeks out, and then if we need to do something, we can go ahead and put it on the October agenda? Because we're going to make the, the...
October, moved up.
Because of our break, right? So if we could do something within the next two weeks, that would still give us another two weeks, maybe right out two weeks before our next fourth meeting. What do you all think about that?
I'm good with it.
I'll be down in October.
May two, and, and if at that time, during that work session, if it...
Are you going on Tuesday? I'm sorry, what did you just say, Gina? October third is a Tuesday?
That's fine with me, but now you said you wouldn't...
I'll be here the tenth either.
Okay.
I'll be both on my mail. I don't get out until twelve. I get home Thursday afternoons.
Tuesday is better for me. That Tuesday and the third.
I'm good with the third, are you good with the third? You good with the third? Everybody good with the third? Are y'all good with the third? That's the next question, I mean...
I have to remind myself.
Was, was five o'clock good with you all, or is that too early, too late?
October third. Five o'clock is better, five o'clock.
It's just work session.
I think that works well for me.
Just right here.
On the third.
And what I was going to mention a minute ago, at that time, if this is something that attorneys say, this document's good, this makes sense to us, and y'all tell us that, you know what, this all makes sense to us, we got to take a formal action, we'd like to take a formal action next four weeks, we'll go ahead and get mobilized at that time, and you, and, and to make sure, because I, I just don't want to have an issue with you missing out on funds, or we're having a construction delay. And, and I don't want to wait on a formal to do that, we'll take, take that to meet risk and get started.
We're planning on October third at five, that's good with you all, and that, that'll let us put it on our October meeting if we need to approve anything.
The document for the agreement, uh, just, just very good for you? Okay.
I'll be here the third or the tenth.
Okay.
They send me back to school thoroughly.
I got some good ideas for you guys.
Thank you.
If y'all have any questions, we'll, myself and the rest of the staff.
Thank you. We'll hear from her. I grabbed hers. It is the fourteenth.
October third, Tuesday night, two weeks from now.
Okay, we'll, I guess have probably other questions at that night, but there are no more tonight. Uh, we didn't have any polisher review for August. Was there any need for executive session? No executive session? Reminders, our meeting will be Tuesday, October tenth. And also November, we have the fourteenth of the school board retreat, and we have a meeting after that retreat, and it would be here. Everybody remember that?
That same day.
That same day. It's going to be a long day, yeah, but we'll get it all done.
That's right, and everybody has to be here, or else we have to walk the map. Well, no, 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 Tommy, help orchestrate this, so Tommy will not miss.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Ms. Gatton-Bynne, we have a second. Ms. Moore, all in favor, say aye.